Good evening, everybody. This is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona to be held April 2nd, 2019 at 6:00 PM. If you could please have the clerk take the roll.
Councilmember Althouse?
Here.
Councilmember Halls?
Here.
Councilmember Howdige?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Narin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Here.
Mayor Alinsky?
Here. Thank you. All right, please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next on the agenda is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Councilmembers, do we have anything to share tonight?
I do.
Please.
So, just, I think, a week or two weeks ago, Mayor Alinsky, city manager Corbin, and myself attended the Old Town Association Business Mixer at Red Rooster. They were highlighting that member business, and I believe they plan to move the mixer every quarter to a different Old Town meeting. They discussed their marketing efforts and also their plans for a new event. I think they said they're planning a cornhole competition in June in the park right across the street, so looking forward to a new event, see how that goes.
And Vice Mayor, also a car show, I believe, they're gonna be putting on, on Main Street.
Oh, do you know when that is? I don't remember.
Do not. They've already put in for their special use permit, so they're moving along, but it's sometime this summer.
So, new events from the Old Town Association, which, which sound fun already so far. Richard Faust attended the Verde Valley Regional Economic Organization Long Range Strategic Planning Committee meeting, along with myself. The group brainstormed ideas to implement the first round of the VIVIRIO Strategic Plan Priorities. Especially interesting at that meeting was the discussion about workforce housing, which has been a repeated theme, you know, at our own strategic planning meetings now for a couple of years. Robert Winnicky also attended the Verde Valley Transportation Planning Organization meeting with myself again. Of note, we got an update about the progress of the Verde Connect Plan, I'm sorry. They'll be having some additional public meetings, I think, in the next month or so, so if you want more details, and maybe some actual narrowed-down routes, stay tuned for those. Also, one item that I thought was especially interesting was the proposed narrowing of the roadway between Cottonwood and Clarkdale. Clarkdale is planning to put in pedestrian and bike lanes, and so they're going to narrow down the roadway and put the speed limit down, I believe, 10 miles an hour throughout there. And then lastly, I did attend the Achieve 60 AZ meeting up in Flagstaff. This is a statewide initiative to try to encourage post-secondary graduation or certificates, whether it's CTE or a degree. They need to add a million people in the next 10 years, so it seems like a pretty lofty goal, but they're exploring how they can do that and how they can get there. It was a really interesting meeting with furthering education efforts.
Okay. Great. Any other councilmembers? No. Just share briefly, last Friday, I was able to welcome about 30 folks from rural Arizona for the STEM event that was taking place. It was a two-day event, science, technology, engineering, and math. It's part of the SciTech Fest. We had cottonwood representation there through Debbie Brightwrights, who helped organize that event. Former mayor Diane Jones was there as well, but it was exciting to welcome so many people from rural Arizona, Cochise County, Sholo, Springerville, all over. So, good event, and they had a packed agenda. I hope they enjoyed themselves here and filled the hotels. Tomorrow, Ron Corbin and I are gonna go meet Dr. Ryan, the new president of Yavapai College, so I'm looking forward to that tomorrow evening. And this Saturday, I'm hoping to attend the Library of Volunteer Appreciation event, because it's fun. They always have a lot of fun, so I hope I can make it this Saturday. That's all I have. Ron, do you have anything?
I do. Mr. Mayor, a couple of things. Coming up is the Brian Mickelson Memorial Run Walk, which will be on Saturday, April 13th, beginning at 6:00 AM. There is still time to register, so please get online and join us for a great morning. There's also still time to purchase a brick from the commemorative brick program. They're $100, and they'll be used to make the walkway across the street here for our clubhouse. The first installation, if you wanna, if you wanna get your brick in, because someone's installing them, April 12th. Oh, that's you. That's right, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations, and thank you for doing that. So, if you want your brick included in the first install, then please, April 5th is the deadline to order those, so there's still time. May is Bike Month for the mayor's bike ride, and there will be a bike rodeo on Friday, April 26th, so lots more to come in the next few weeks for Bike Month. Donna Lewandowski with ADOT will be hosting a bicycle safety seminar on April 17th from 12 to 4 at the rec center, so come on out and learn about bike safety. And then, right now, the Verde Valley Leadership is accepting applications for class number 14. The program is a one-year program to help individuals develop further leadership skills and inspire individuals to action. The deadline for applying is April 30th, and I think this organization, we support the Verde Leadership Academy, and I encourage those who have the time and can make the commitment to apply.
Very good. All right. Moving on, then. Next on the agenda is call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action, and we limit comments to a five-minute time period. If you'd like to address the council, there are yellow forms. They look very similar to this on the back table. You can fill one out. So far, we only have one, from Rena Avalon, here tonight to address the council, so come on up. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Evening.
Mayor, councilmembers, city managers, thank you for your attention. My name is Rena Avalon. I'm the executive director of the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition, and I imagine it's about budget time for you all, and I'm here to address homelessness as a need for your budget, as a need for a line item. Most of us know in our hearts that the homeless are not so very different from us. They may be victims of poor planning, crisis, trauma of some nature, but they're, you know, given their circumstances and their lives, we might have ended up in the very same place. We are very, very, so very grateful for the $12,000 that we've received last year, and it was, it's a wonderful start. It allowed us to open the drop-in center, and we've been able to cover the rent and utilities with that. But, I mean, it's a start, but the real issue, as I'm sure you're aware of, is the lack of affordable housing. And while that's a nationwide problem, it's not just a Cottonwood problem. In the meantime, while we're addressing the housing problem, what can we do to help the homeless and the low-income? We serve many, many low-income. In our first eight months, we've served over 330 members of our community in ways from laundry vouchers to, you know, food supplies, to toiletries, to, you know, use of the computers, and there are many, many services that we provide that it's really, probably half of that 330 are actually homeless, which belies the pit count numbers greatly. And so, we want to serve those who want to better themselves and want to change their situation, you know. There are many that want to work, but trying to work and maintain a job, I mean, while living a homeless lifestyle is almost impossible. I mean, being homeless is almost a full-time job, trying to get their needs met, and we're proactively seeking solutions. We're still working on purchasing the building for the transitional housing, and it will, we're going to lease it as of August 1st. It will double the size of our drop-in center and thus double the emergency overnight shelter space. We, you know, we were open 40 nights this past winter, and we had to turn people away because we only have room for 12. You know, the model for, to make young people happy with the parks is nice, you know, but it doesn't do anything to address the needs of the homeless population or the low-income population of our community. And yes, they are members of our community as well, and we need to address that. Our desire is not just to make, you know, them happier or more comfortable, but what we're working on is changing lives, you know, actually changing their lives. And we've, there are 10 people we've assisted with getting employment and housing. So, this, I, the community is definitely concerned about the homeless. I mean, the fallout from the CTBG decision, I don't know how much you heard it, but my phone was ringing off the hook for weeks, and, you know, on social media and the editorials. The community, it desperately wants to address the homeless issue, and...
Ms. Avalon?
Yeah, I know.
Your time's almost up. If you could wrap it up shortly.
Yeah, I've wrapped it up.
Yeah, thank you.
So, we, I would like a commitment from the city. You know, we want to, our, our goal is to provide real solutions to alleviate homelessness in the Verde Valley and Cottonwood in particular. And so, that's our commitment, and I would like the city to commit to putting a line item in the budget to address homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight. Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to address the council? Okay. Okay, we move on to approval of minutes of the work session of March 12, 2019, and regular meeting of March 19, 2019.
I move to approve the minutes. Second?
Okay. Councilmember Althouse made the motion. Councilmember Narin seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Consent agenda, there are just two items tonight on the consent agenda, and the following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless councilmember or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda, considering its normal sequence. So, I'll read the items out loud. Item one is special vet liquor license application submitted by Christian Olivad Del Rio, applicant for the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce for a chamber mixer scheduled for April 18, 2019, at 197 South Willard Street, Haven of Cottonwood. Item two is resolution number 2993 affirming a fair housing policy, making known its commitment to the principle of fair housing and describing actions it should, it shall undertake to affirmatively further fair housing. Any item from the consent agenda that a councilmember would like to have pooled? No. Member of the public? No? Okay.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
I'll second.
Okay, so we had Vice Mayor make the motion, and Councilmember Althouse second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, consent agenda is approved, and we roll into new business. And the following items are for this council discussion, consideration of possible legal action. Item one is resolution number 2996, appointing Catherine Kelly as presiding magistrate of the Cottonwood Municipal Court from April 14, 2019 through April 13, 2021. Evening.
Good evening. I'm Amanda Loeber, HR Director. As you know, last Tuesday, you interviewed five candidates for the presiding magistrate position and gave staff direction to negotiate with Catherine Kelly, which we did so. We have proposed the attached contract for you for Catherine Kelly, which she has agreed to already. So, that is the work we've done to this point. Do you have any questions or concerns about the agreement or anything related?
No, I think it's what we discussed, and appreciate your hard work on that, and appreciate Judge Kelly coming on board. Looking forward to working with her. So, you must need a motion.
I move to approve resolution 2996, appointing Catherine Kelly as the presiding magistrate of the Cottonwood Municipal Court for the two-year period from April 14, 2019 through April 13, 2021, and approving the proposed employment agreement as presented.
Second?
Okay, Councilmember Narin made the motion. Councilmember Matthews seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Althouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Halls?
Yes.
Councilmember Howdige?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes, thank you. And I do wish to thank Judge Soto, too, for his hard work as our magistrate for several years, 10 years, I believe.
10.
Yeah, did a wonderful job with our court, and certainly implemented a lot of the great programs we have there that I hope Judge Kelly will continue, so thank you. Okay, next is item two, resolution number 2994, appointing David Myers, a member of the Board of Adjustment.
Good evening, I guess. We currently have two Board of Adjustment seats available still. We have advertised this position for quite some time. During the most recent posting, we received one application from Dave Myers. So, because we only had the one application for the two seats, we did not do the line review process. Mr. Myers does reside within the incorporated city limits and therefore meets the requirements to serve on the Board of Adjustments. And in addition to what's on his application in your packet, he was also appointed last council meeting to the Personnel Board, and Mr. Myers is here to introduce himself tonight.
Very good. Shall we call Mr. Myers forward to award him his frequent flyer card? Good evening. Thanks again for, for applying for another volunteer position. What is it that appeals to you about the Board of Adjustment?
There's a need.
What's that?
There's a need.
There's a need, great.
Yes.
Well, we appreciate you. We appreciate you very much. Again, you know, there's many other commissions in the city. This is not the most exciting one, but, but there is a need, so thank you very much. Any other questions from council for Mr. Myers?
No, but thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Move to approve resolution number 2994, appointing Dave Myers, a member of the city's Board of Adjustment, with the term expiring April 4, 2022.
Second?
Okay, Vice Mayor made the motion, and Councilmember Halls seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Althouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Halls?
Yes.
Councilmember Howdige?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky.
Yes. Congratulations. Since you're glutton for punishment, I should ask you if you want to install some memorial bricks, too.
May I ask a question about the Board of Adjustments before we move on? I'm wondering, now that we're close to having it almost full, I know that they haven't met in years and only have to meet on certain occasions, but would it be prudent of us, big word for me, to have them get together just so we can establish a chair and a vice chair, and so if something were to come up, they're an established group? And I don't know who I'm directing my question to. It's just kind of...
Yep, we will. That's through planning and zoning, so we will, we'll have a meeting now that we have several members.
Before, it was just, I think...
I think we'd call that an organizational meeting, and I think that's appropriate to adopt, elect officers and adopt rules of procedure, something that corporations have to do every year, at least meet once a year. And, and to the mayor's point, it's only not exciting because they don't convene very often, but when they do have a need to convene because of what their jurisdiction is, it can get real exciting real quick. And Mr. Mayor, if I can add, we're gonna do the same thing with our Personnel Board. They haven't met in a long time for a specific reason, but we're gonna get them on board, elect a new chair, vice chair, and all that stuff, so we're doing that with all the boards.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you.
Very good.
And as the, I don't believe anyone in the Planning and Zoning Department that's there currently now has ever had a Board of Adjustment meeting, I'll be happy to help them set that up.
There was George that was there the last time.
Wow. It was a long time ago.
Tosca, was that when you were the, the chair of the?
I believe they met once after I was the chair, but yes, years ago. I hope I didn't kill the organization. Sorry.
All right. Okay, item three is resolution number 2995, appointing Michael Matthews, a member of the Historic Preservation Commission.
Yes.
Should I move down there?
Yeah.
Okay, we have two full-term positions and one partial term available on the Historic Preservation Commission. The partial term is due to someone stepping down, and then the two full terms are just expiration of their terms, one of which is Councilmember Michael Matthews. During this time of opening, we only received one application from Michael Matthews, who is currently serving on the Historic Preservation Commission already. Mr. Matthews resides within the Incorporated City Limits and has a background related to this commission as well, so he meets the minimum qualifications to be on this board, and staff recommends that he be reappointed to a term.
And I serve on that commission as well, and I can attest that Councilmember Matthews, Commissioner Matthews has done a stellar job, helped out a lot with the Historic Home and Building Tour, and has been a real active participant in the commission, so we appreciate his hard work.
Is he installing bricks with you?
He is. He promised he would. But that's not the only reason he deserves the point.
Obviously, he is here tonight for...
We hear a lot from him otherwise, but maybe we could call him up just real quick.
Hello, everybody. It has been a pleasure to serve. It's something that's kind of near and dear to my heart, history and architecture and houses, and I do just love it. And it's been a really rewarding to work on a home tour every year, and I look forward to continuing to serve in that capacity. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
You ready?
Yeah.
I move to approve resolution number 2995, appointing Michael Matthews, a member of the Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term.
Second?
Okay, Councilmember Althouse made the motion. Councilmember Halls seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Althouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Halls?
Yes.
Councilmember Howdige?
Yes.
Councilmember, oh, Councilmember Matthews is upstate. Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes, thank you. Congratulations.
Competition is fierce.
You rose at the top. Okay, next is request to spend up to $32,000 in undesignated reserves to purchase window curtains for the Cottonwood Community Clubhouse. Mr. Allen?
Mr. Mayor, council, Hezekiah Allen with the Parks Recreation Department. This evening, we're here to request funding for, to purchase curtains, the interior window curtains for the Cottonwood Community Clubhouse. As council is aware, two, three years ago, we set down the course of bringing back this building to life in a manner that is usable to the community, in, in a manner that provides the building being sustainable going into the future. The building's looking fantastic. If you've not been in there, the last missing piece to get it open, and that's, parentheses around "open," are the curtains within the facility on the windows. In your package, we included, how many, total revenue to date, $744,000 and some change as far as grants received. Total cost for the project is around 1.2 million, and the project net cost to the city at this point is $461,000 and some change. More recently, I received one more quote this afternoon from a local company, and they came in around $8,000 cheaper for the window curtains. Sorry. Yay! Every time I see that, I get excited. So, yeah, so currently, the requested ask is $22,105,013. That's including the tribal funds of $6,535 that we've already received, and Stro Architecture, Doug Stro, has decided that he would donate $1,000 to $2,000 to assist in the project as well, to get the curtains up. And I have pictures of kind of what we're thinking for curtains, if you want to see those.
Trust your design.
We hired somebody, so...
I trust, I trust your decision.
I did ask Ron about the, there was the first year Historic Home and Building Tour raised money to go to the Civic Center. Has that money been spent?
No.
Okay, so there's still 2,500 bucks or so? Okay, so that could be applied, should be applied to that, since that's really the last ticket, right, that we need to pay to get that thing up and running?
To get it open.
No, there's still landscaping.
And then the...
Parks and chairs, stage curtains. It's just never-ending with this project.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I can add, Vice Mayor, you're absolutely correct, and which is why we're here to, to be transparent and show the numbers, but she's absolutely right. We have the landscaping that we plan on hopefully doing mostly with grant funding. We have some plans for that, so we're gonna mostly do that with other resources. We still have the stage curtains that we will try to make happen. There's a little bit more painting that we want to do, and then tables and chairs. And so, the tables and chairs will come back as part of next year's budget to see if it fits in with that. Currently, our plan, because we are gonna do a soft opening and start using it in May, is we will get tables and chairs from the rec center or other places to, to fill it. Originally, there were some other options being considered for funding, including having a major sponsor pay for some of these items, but then they, in exchange, they wanted to be able to operate the facility. And my belief was that we should operate the facility to ensure that it remains a community clubhouse, so that we can still ensure, I know that council, I believe council has a desire to offer discounted pricing for nonprofit organizations and other types of, of events, so we didn't feel comfortable giving up, or I didn't feel good for giving control to another organization to run the clubhouse. I, I feel like it's a gem for our community, and it should be run out of Parks and Rec, or at least out of the city. So, we do want to get it open, and so the thought here was, we, I worked through our finance department. It is money available to spend that isn't currently designated to go anywhere else, so it is budgeted, available, undesigned, so, which is why we're back here with council to, to see if you would authorize the expenditure. And it sounds like, if we're correct, we could take 8,000 off the asking, what we've asked us... to be authorized to spend. I haven't seen the quote, so is that correct?
Yeah.
So currently, we're asking for 31.5, so we could subtract another 8,000 off of that, because this quote came in 8,000 lower than we'd originally planned.
In addition, the money that was set aside from the first... I think it's about...
If you could authorize us up too, and then we'll only spend what we need to, because we still have one more quote, we're getting three quotes, it could come in lower, and then we'll make sure that we spend that money first before we go into this other.
Okay, let's have a conversation about this then, council. How do we feel about this?
So what I see here is we're looking at, if we take that $8,000 off plus the 2,500 that's coming from the tour monies, we're looking at about $21,000. Okay.
But I think we might want to, just to be, so it doesn't have to come back, maybe do 22, even maybe 23, just depending on what's in that 2,500, knowing that they'll only spend what they need. I mean, I would hate for TAP to come back because we were $100 short.
Right.
Well, and Mr. Mayor, if I can say, and we'll come back anyway, as part of the budget process, you'll see these numbers all over again when we request the tables and chairs.
I was just talking to the Assistant City Manager, Deputy City Manager, just a thought, if we, if you authorize this up to the 32, we could also maybe include the stage curtains too.
You have a price on those yet?
I do, but around 13,000.
So I support the project as, you know, the general idea, the concept, the, how it was started, but these, you know, as I've said every single time we discuss these expenditures, it keeps growing and growing and growing, and the end is still not in sight. We still don't have numbers for the landscaping. I haven't seen numbers for the tables and chairs, and it's just, I don't think it's an appropriate use of taxpayer funds to spend this much money on the window coverings. We've already had events in there without window coverings. I thought it looked fine, so I don't know why we can't open and get started generating revenue. And, you know, we just heard during the call of the public that, you know, our homeless were turning people away, or the Homeless Coalition is turning people away for lack of funding. So personally, I don't support, there's got to be a different way to find money for this project. We've already given our money from the Yavapai Pachti Nation, we've already, you know, had fundraisers, the city's already spent several hundred thousand dollars out of our own pocket, and it's just still more expenses. So I, just at this point, think we need to get it up and running and have it start paying for the improvements itself.
Vice Mayor, valid concerns and questions? Just to note, we did put a request in last year's budget for the curtains, which was denied. In addition to, we want to get the facility open and running and making revenue, and you only get only one chance at that grand opening. And we want the facility to be used for weddings and corporate events and community events, and a facility that we're all proud of. We've invested this much thus far, just a consideration.
And I share your frustration too, because I think it has been one of those projects that, you know, we keep kind of nickel and diming our way to completion. I think the curtains are a very important part to its completion. Very hopeful and optimistic that we can get grant funding to fund the landscaping. And Historic Preservation Commission's worked hard to do this memorial brick program to raise funds, and, you know, we're doing the best we can to get there. I don't know, the stage curtains are as necessary at this time, but I think in terms of protecting the floor from UV light and deadening sound so that it is a usable...
Correct.
...facility, I think we ran into that issue with the reclamation facility where it was, it just wasn't a usable space because it was so echoey, and it wasn't as attractive a venue because of that, so. Anyway, those are my thoughts. I'm okay with funding from an designated reserves, the curtains. But I'm very curious how the rest of council feels.
I agree with Tosca, it's kind of nickel and diming, but I think a good compromise would be go ahead and get the curtains in there. There is a sound deadening effect that's going to be helpful in trying to get that thing rented and being usable. And then let's start making some revenue before we start putting into stage curtains and other things. Try to get it up and running and bringing back some money.
I agree. I think valid, very, you know, valid points from everybody, and it is a beautiful facility. I don't see the stage curtains as being as important or important, especially if, you know, for weddings and such, so I'd rather keep it lower and have stuff come through the regular budget.
I would agree with what we're saying right now. I concur, I think we need the curtains. I think in the meantime, I would ask Mr. Allen to get some quotes on the completion of the items that are outstanding, bring those back for budget with one full package of, it's going to cost X dollars to complete, and in this nickel and diming, to say, we need X dollars to do whatever it is that you need to do to complete the clubhouse, so that we can budget that either in one fell swoop or over a period of time, but know exactly where we're at. But I'd agree that, I think the curtains are important for getting the benefit, the use, and being able to generate income to help offset the cost.
Can I ask a question before we go on? No, my understanding is, is that we're going to be renting this facility out?
Yes.
Is there any leeway to allow someone to use this free for certain events?
I think we still have to take that, Councilmember, we still have to take that back to council and discuss the fees and the use and things like that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, yes, we're going to bring the fees back, but I think I've heard more than one time from more than one council member that they want options to reduce their free rates for certain groups in the community. So that'll be your guys' decision, and we'll bring back options that include free rentals based on some factor, and we'll work that into our presentation.
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate, since this is a community building, being paid for with community money, so something we should consider very, very strongly.
And I agree with you, Councilmember Henry, this may not be the appropriate time to spend this money.
I guess that leaves me. I agree, everybody's made some really good points, and we do need to do something to address the homelessness issue, but I think that the community center can be helpful to even those organizations if we're going to give them free rental or seriously reduce rentals so that they could fundraise and draw in some money that way. So I think at this point, I could support spending the money on the curtains if it means we'll be able to open up the space for those agencies to be able to fundraise and bring in the funds they need to progress in their efforts.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just add one last thing, please, I, this is my hit, he did ask for it in last year's budget, and then there was an idea to be more creative in the funding, which I moved us away from on purpose. So this was, it wasn't my idea to nickel and dime us, but the reason we're here today is because I would do want to get this up and running and moving and generating revenue, so this is on my shoulders, less than it is Hes's at this point. So we will do that, we will get the rates back to you sooner rather than later, and then in the budget process, we will, Councilmember Hulse, we'll have a final price tag for everything complete. Just so you know, we talked about at the HPC, it was a grand opening in the fall when the outside is done, and we'll combine it with another event with Old Town, and we'll make a big celebration of it, but we don't want to wait till the fall to start using it. We just kind of feel like this is the last piece. We'll bring back the pricing soon, and we'll get it up and running and moving. So I do apologize, it's not the way I like to do a project.
There's no apology necessary, and I appreciate all the work that staff has done on this project. It's exciting, it'll be good to have it open. Just wish that, you know, we'd had a cap and stuck with it, but I think, I like the comments that we've heard from all of my fellow council members, and I think that they're being, I think this is a reasonable way to move forward.
I assume then, you're going to pull that 2,500 out as part of the money that you're collecting to put together for this?
Yes.
That we're, okay. Well, I'll make a motion if somebody will entertain that.
Before you do that, what amount of money are we talking now?
It's going to be part of the motion.
We, so, we were at $22,105,13 prior to the 2,500, so minus 2,500 from the 22,105,13, so...
But, okay, so you want, you don't want the 2,500 put into motion?
I think 23,000?
If you could go 23,000, I promise we will spend that money first.
I was going to go 24 and let you try to save even more.
Yes, and we will only spend what is required, what is absolutely necessary, on the curtains.
So then I'll go ahead and make the motion unless somebody has any other comments. Yeah, where is that? So I move to authorize spending up to $24,000 in undesignated reserves for window curtains at the Cottonwood Community Clubhouse.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Matthews made the motion. Councilmember Althouse seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Althouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Howdige?
No.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Henry?
No.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda is consideration of possible approval of the Cottonwood Strategic Plan. I believe we have Ms. Scorpius?
Yes, if Ryan can come on up though, just in case he has questions. He did a lot of the legwork, so I want to make sure he gets a credit there for that. We reviewed it at the last work session, and we made changes based on Vice Mayor Henry's recommendation to do some reordering. You've got three versions of the same thing, depending on what you like. We have just a Word document, which is, you know, what we can also hand out, but we've got artistically done in two other formats, but I think it prioritizes economic growth that this council is very supportive of, so really, unless you have any questions, we're here to answer questions. And again, I'd like to thank Ryan and all the leaders of the project that made this happen, very excited about it. I can tell you what we're already doing with it. Mary Ann and I met this morning, we actually started talking about what the Clerk's Office can do to further the strategic plan. At the leadership team meeting on Monday, I directed all the directors to own some part of the strategic plan, and so at our next meeting on Monday, we will begin to set projects and deadlines and work based on the strategic plan, so that it's not just a document on the shelf, but we actually start to implement your strategic plan.
Thank you.
Great. Any thoughts on the layout, on the document?
I like it. I do too, it's real good. Nicely done, huh?
Very nice.
I did absolutely none of that.
Who did the artistic work?
Yeah, who did?
Well, I never pronounce her name right.
Kirsten.
Kirsten, our part-time marketing person, did one of the, did the one that you like better, Mayor, and then I copied some of that for the other one. So we, I thank her a lot, so...
Well, she did a great job, so please extend our appreciation.
Will one of the more marketing-looking pieces be up on our website?
Yes.
Good, you ready?
Yes.
I move to approve the City of Cottonwood Strategic Plan.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Althouse made the motion. Vice Mayor seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Althouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Howdige?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes. Okay, very good. Thanks, everyone, for the work on that. Well, it pains me to say it, but I move to pay the claims and adjustments.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Narin seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Before seven, we could stick around for a little bit longer.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All adjourned, thank you.
Good job.